Thank you for joining us tonight. Is the. We have. April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two school committee meeting. And we just returned from executive session to discuss issues under purpose three. Discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation or litigating position of the public body. And that is pertaining to the Menfield Teachers Association. Unit A and B. So I will now call order this. April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session. Beginning with a roll call. Start there.
Michelle Kirkby, present.
Michelle Kirkby.
Anna Mae O'Shea.
And Jessica Riley here. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Menfield TV YouTube channel. Which means at this point we will move on to public input. So citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on this evening's agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time. At the meeting at which the item is presented. All comments will be taken in person and limited to three minutes. And please state your name and address for the public record. You can approach the podium. Anybody has public input for this one?
I actually.
So we got plenty. We have plenty of opportunities. Thank you. We have one audience member here. Okay. And the next item on the agenda is to approve and retain the executive session minutes for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two and March twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-two. I will make a motion to approve those. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
And do I have any nays? Or do I have any extensions?
I abstain.
Okay, and Michelle, you abstain. Because this is your first.
Correct.
Go around, so you were not in the executive session. Could attest to that. Okay. So the motion passes unanimously or with two yays and one extension. Now, do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two? I will forward that motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Anna Mae.
Okay, Anna Mae, second. Do I hear all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I hear any extensions?
Michelle Kirkby.
Michelle Kirkby. So not here for that. Thank you. So the motion passes. With two yays and one extension. All right, that's the first part of that business. Um, so we're going on to new business at this point. And this is the student activity account transfer. So Dr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Michael will present some adjustments to. He'd like to make with inactive student activity accounts to zero out the balance of the category. So I know Michael has some information on that.
Michael LaForte, Jessica will approach the podium. It is very far away. Michael, do you want to scooch that?
Okay, so this is the high schools of student activity account. Dr. I should say, Robert. Our high school principal worked with a few advisors that oversee the student activity account and they want to make some. They want to clean up the account. So we do have some accounts that are considered dead accounts, which means those accounts are no longer in use. So they want to take those. The dollar amount that are in those accounts and move them over to some other accounts such as. Student enrichment or the. Lit magazine. So they just want to move money from one account into the other account. They had to get permission from all the different. Advisors that oversee those accounts. They did get permission. They put together the schedule and then the schedule goes to our school committee for final approval.
And. Do you have any questions about this? It's essentially moving money from accounts that simply have been kind of laying dormant and putting that money to work for kids who are here now. And being able to support their activities in current.
It's well documented. I mean, you've got the emails here to say where it's going from, why it's going.
Anything else to say about that, Dr. Morrison, or any other questions? It's a relatively simple transaction.
Yes.
Done before. It's more about making sure that our. Money is going where it's supposed to. Do I have any public input on this? Okay. Then do I hear a motion to approve the student account transfer as outlined by Mr. LaForte? So moved by Anna Mae. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And second by Michelle Kirkby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Dr. Morrison. Maybe this is the other items since posting.
Serious exam asking me to redo their.
Okay, well, then that's really probably not part of school business. So do we have any other items since posting on April twelve?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we will move on to kind of the media part of the meeting tonight. Which is the fiscal year twenty-three budget update under old business. So. Michael or Dr. Morrison would you like to present on that?
Sure. So as after our last meeting, there have been no changes since the. You folks revoked the FY twenty-three budget. That number has gone to print for the town warrant and hopefully be passing at the May second meeting. So absolutely no changes going forward.
All right. Sounds good. Do I have any public input on that? No? Okay. Then I think the next thing that we move on to is the elementary school project. Listening session and the feedback discussion that we would like to have here. We will also be talking about next steps and potentially voting on the. I'm sorry, the SOI, which is the. Letter of interest to the MSBA. So does anyone here want to talk about things that they heard? Their feelings about next steps, where you agree, things that you're not. Quite. You'd like to kind of flesh out a little bit before, you know, the school building committee kind of comes online, whoever they may be. That's Warner article that's coming up.
Right.
At the next. Town meeting, which is on April. So the language.
The language, yeah, thank you. Yeah. I suppose I was most grateful that Stephen Callahan brought up that. Whomever is hired to be the OPM, you know, is someone really taking on that communications. Piece with experience, the listening session, you know, just kind of the package.
Right.
So that they know this, they know how to do this, and it's not piecemealing.
And also there is, I think that that was an overarching concern. Anytime that I heard anybody talk about anything. Really what they were talking about is how do you get communication that is. Universally understood and trusted as a source or as much as you can be in terms of consensus. How do you get that into the community where they under, where the community will understand that they can have. Feedback loop. It's not simply putting out information, but putting out information that then you can feed back in. Without exhausting committee members too. I mean, I, you know. A school building committee is not a small undertaking. They have to do these kind of like administrative. You know. Things that you're literally teaching yourself a new skill each and every day when there is no. You know, there's no paper of record. There's nothing. Anymore. So how do we get scientifically real data? How do we get information out there?
Right.
That's really.
Just to that point, Madam Chair, I would say that Anna Mae recruited.
Astounding job.
And the amount of time and effort that they did.
And was.
And.
And should not be asked. By the committee. You did fantastic well.
I would look at our neighboring communities that are. That came into the project similar timeframe of hours in their budget, they put a PR person.
I second that idea, just the amount of work that I feel like I did advocating for the new school and understanding that you were constantly battling. A false narrative on every front. So what we're talking about trusted sources, like. There were trusted sources, but there was so much back and forth on if you could trust the source and there needs to be a way for us to. Hire like a third party or some semblance of making sure that the information going out is. I don't know. Some, a better way to battle the false narrative, I guess.
And also that it's, you know, I mean. The committee itself is immensely transparent. How are you able to? How are you able to demonstrate transparency when the amount of data that comes out of any one meeting? The amount of information that is packaged into. Like any of the things that are required to do a building when you do not have familiarity with building. Or understand where your touch points are. And I think that was another valuable part of the discussion was about touch points.
Yeah, and I like.
You know, mutually mutually agreed upon touch points too, I think will be a very important thing going forward for everyone.
When Robert, I think, was talking and Tim kind of piggybacked off the idea of having milestones, like, like the ability to get buy-in from the community at different points in time. I feel like that was done to an extent last time, but I think. People didn't realize it till too late that they should have been paying attention to participating. So if there's a better way to add those. I don't know. Like buy-in points, and I guess almost to like help people understand.
How do we ring the bell so that everybody knows?
And I wonder in that state too, when you pick some of those more controversial things like. Site selection. Like how is that conversation going to go? And I think you almost have to think about like who's showing up, who's participating, and what are we looking at in that space? So.
But I like how Gus ended it in terms of we want a school.
Right.
Want a school, we want a school, and we're ready to move forward. And I think there are lots of lessons learned. I think we're hopefully intending to go into this with open hearts, open minds to really get a new school for these families.
Yeah. No, and I think that all of the, and like I said, from any. Any point of view that I heard that night, whether I knew that the person in front of me had not been in favor or that they had been in favor. I felt it was really this theme of how do we help everyone come along? When you're immersed in it up to your ears, how do we help people understand what's happening so that they have a chance to have that same feedback loop? And I think that's really important. I think that's probably the biggest thing that came out of it. Not that it wasn't done. It's that having it broadcasted. Rather wider in a way that people know.
Yeah.
Pay attention. I do think that that's, you know, that's about. Resources.
Yeah.
Honestly, it's truly about resources.
I did like the conversation too, and I was just an observer. I wasn't on the folks, but a conversation around, you know, we, we were able to get the communication out to the parents fairly quickly.
Yeah.
And how can the town participate in that so that people that don't have kids in the school anymore can get that information? I know we tried to do that with press releases and. Patch and all that kind of thing, but I think sometimes a nice direct email to folks might. Allow them to take a look at the information right on their computer screen or their phone whenever they want to do that. So. Somehow harness a way that the town can participate in that communication piece as well would be really good.
That would be interesting.
Yeah.
Who has a dog in town? I think we can figure out what the jog is. I assume we could probably do an opt-in.
Right, but then if you're opting and it's coming from the town, you're helping people not have to sign up for eighteen different places to get their information. And then the information might not align. Right? Like if that, the town is the trusted source, then we can get people who don't have kids in the system to be opting in. I think that's a, that sounded a good path to be exploring.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think those are conversations that we'll have to have, which is select board.
Yeah.
And then not currently select board, that's maybe select board. And. I just keep calling them select board, but I realize it's not the right name yet. But those are conversations that we'll have to have as, as citizens ourself.
Yeah.
You know, and as committee members, to be able to make this a successful venture, I think. So, and then I do hear, and I understand this, and I am very concerned about this myself. Is that there is this significant concern. That the longer we wait, the more it is going to cost for very much less project. And I know that that's extraordinarily frustrating to people who are finance, private finance.
Yes, yeah.
Because municipal finance and private finance are two completely different animals. You can come from one and go directly into another. At the end, you know, within, within private business, you can hedge, you know, you can take out debt now and then later.
Right.
That is not the way of municipal. Funds. And so it does end up being a matter of. Measured speed. You know, we have to get this done, but we can't just slap something up and hope that it works for ten years. What a waste of all of our resources. I never want to see our town have to go through something quite so contentious again. So. Anybody else have anything specifically around that?
I appreciate the feedback people sent in by the people.
Yes, I was actually just about to mention that. We had about eleven comments on that Google form unless something came in at five. And, you know, essentially, and they'll be part of the, the public record for this. For this meeting. But essentially, they were people from both sides who, who felt like. Whatever it is. That happens. Would you need a school? But it would, again, it ran the wide range.
Yeah.
Of comments.
And I would say too, like, I think the thing that I found encouraging as well was, it was encouraging, was that everyone was able to have a respectful. And constructive dialogue in regards to like their thoughts and opinions and how to look forward. So I'm, I'm feeling hopeful that we're able to kind of continue to have those conversations to get us all to the new school.
And I found that having this kind of reflective. Document open after a feedback session or after meeting on things that are very specifically. Important to the town at large or whatever. It's very helpful to have that Google doc. If you use it on a couple of things, and it's, it's great to get that written reflection because it's that much easier to kind of digest it. Oh, good. Okay. Okay, great. Then we will put that into, what we'll do is put that into a PDF. And when you said.
Just post that on the document.
Yeah. And the select board will have that as well, you know, to be able to reflect on the media. Discuss this next as well, and then it'll be open. So. We should also probably discuss next steps. The next step that we have kind of agreed to, the selectmen have said that they would. Put forth for a vote and that we feel is important, or at least I do, in terms of financially responsible is to submit the SOI. And that at the ATM, the. We're going to do outlet soup here. Sorry for a second. At the annual town meeting, which is on May second. The SBC warrant article, the school building committee warrant article bylaw. An appointment of the SBC. Those will be the next steps after this. So tonight we will put forth the vote for the, to submit the SOI. Then either, I think it's the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah, they put that on the agenda for the nineteenth. The selectmen will also vote on the SOI and then we will submit it on. Fall twenty-nine.
Yeah.
That's how it.
It goes through, yes.
Yeah, it goes. So, um, that is the process around that. Does anybody else have any thoughts about? What we do as next steps aside from that? Like what, what we feel is important? I would still like to be able to have any kind of collection of data, but at this point, it'll like I'm banging my head because nobody. It's like the hot potato. Everybody thinks it's a great idea, and nobody knows who's going to pay for it and who's going to do it.
Yeah.
So it may end up being that the SBC has to kind of move forward, knowing that this is something that's important to both groups.
Right.
And to the town. But they got to do it. So I don't know.
Yeah.
It's their, you know, at that point, it becomes their, their duty. You know, we do education work, but we can't, we are not a building committee.
Right.
As much as people seem to think that the school committee builds the school, we build the educational plan, town builds the school.
Right.
So. Anything you would like to say? Right now, we're talking about the SOI, talking about future financing.
So I, I, you know, just from my perspective, it really is your decision as a committee and the board selectmen. So. It's up to you folks. So if you decide to tonight and the board selectmen decide to do it on the nineteenth, then I'll happily submit that, you know, on the twenty-ninth. If one or both don't, that's fine too. We'll just work out, you know, we'll go through without MSBA. So I'm, I'm finding a way. I want to get a project going, get it done. I mean, that's what we need to do. So. However, people want to do it. But I did want to share. I know I put in your, your packets, just a memo around the Tisbury model we've heard so much about. If I could share that, Madam Chair, just to kind of read it. So. After hearing so much about how Tisbury could be a model for Menfield to follow in order to replace and or repair the Dale Street School. I decided to reach out to a town official from Tisbury and learn more about how the Tisbury model could help us. Tisbury Lake Menfield went through the entire MSBA process and their project failed when it was brought to their community for a ballot vote. Tisbury project was designed to build a new school adjacent to the existing building. This allowed the students to stay in the old building during construction, thus providing swing space. Once the project was completed, the old building would be demolished. The availability of swing space is an important point to remember, as was also discussed at special town meeting in November with the Newton example that was shared. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of swing space, as confirmed by the Warren Committee prior to special town meeting last November. This creates a huge expense for Menfield when considering renovation project instead of building a new school. But these are the important facts that I learned through my conversations with a town official. And it really gives you a timeline of, you know, what, what Tisbury was and how it went, you know, how it went down. So in two thousand and eighteen, the total project cost to build a new school was forty-six point six million. That was through the MSBA program. MSBA reimbursement to the town was fourteen point six million, the total cost of the, cost of the town at thirty-two million. So thirty-two million in new school. In two thousand and twenty-one, after their own analysis, Tisbury decided it was more prudent to self-fund their project. So the town voted to renovate the old building. The town appropriated fifty-five million, not sixty million, as was reported locally, to renovate, to renovate the building. So essentially, you're going to spend twenty-three million more to renovate a building. The town is also spending several million dollars on modular classrooms to house students during the construction because they don't have the swing space. Rejected shovel in the ground was one twenty-two, and now full construction is slated to begin in the fall of twenty twenty-two. So they're already behind schedule. And a modular classroom school is going to be built, and I put in quotes on the memo, hopefully opening in nine twenty-two because they haven't got the modules on the island yet. Expected total cost to the town with inflation, again in quotes, will be closer to seventy million for a renovation of an old school, again, not a new school. The Tisbury model with the cost tax base doubled the failed project. Tisbury received zero dollars for MSBA reimbursement. This entire process began in two thousand and twelve. And four years from deciding to go it alone. It's, it will take four years from the time they decided to go alone to the first shovel in the ground. So when I inquired if Menfield should use the Tisbury, Tisbury as a model for our project, the town official replied, this isn't a model for anything. Maybe to save an exterior in an old building, but that's about it. So I just, I offer this memo as factual information to provide clarity and details. About a model that continues to surface as a potential path for Menfield. So I just want to share that with you and the community because I know that's been kind of pushed at us a little bit less.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, so it says in here that in, it looks like, when did they decide to self-fund and when did they vote down the MSBA? That's what I'm trying to.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
And then two thousand and twenty-one was their decision to self-fund.
Okay, so until they actually get their school, it's going to be closer to seven years?
Give or take.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And cost double.
Right, okay.
For renovation on a new school.
Correct, right, okay.
I've looked into that as well, and it actually, the really painful thing about this is that. Tisbury is one of the most underserved communities in the state. If you look at the level of. Student poverty. And while it is, you know, it's, we think of, of Martha's Vineyard as. A place that people go on vacation. It is not necessarily that for everybody. Not all the children. And the fact that. And I've just, I've been looking at this for a year, just. Sad about it frankly, but, but we are not Tisbury and I think.
Actually sad for the kids because it lost by twenty-six votes at the ballot. So I mean, that's, they'd have a new school, you know, in a few years, and now they're going to have a renovated school, double the cost in seven years.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
But. We can take lessons learned hopefully. All right. So the next thing I'm going to bring up is the language for a statement of interest vote, because the MSBA has very specific language around that. And I want to read it out loud. And then I will take public input, and then I will read it out loud again and ask somebody to make a motion for or against. Because I think it's important that we understand what we're voting on. The SOI. Is something that we can submit. The MSBA tells us we have no obligation. To take this money, that we may take it or enter the program if we are invited. And they tell us that they have no obligation. It is simply a letter of interest. But I'm going to read the entire thing because it does get very state language heavy. Okay, so the, the vote would be. Essentially, resolution. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The School Committee of Menfield, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form. Dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, for the Dale Street School located at forty-five Adam Street, Menfield, Massachusetts. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories. For which an application may be submitted to the, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance. Or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Medfield to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So. Is that, that's clear enough in the the legalese that we are not obligated? Should we be invited into the program in December?
Yeah.
Although I do think it is fiscally responsible to certainly consider.
I agree a hundred percent.
Given that we are going to have, if, if we are blessed enough to actually have that option. One way or another, to very much consider. That option because we are already looking at astronomical. Uh, inflation right now over last year. I think in Massachusetts, we're at seven point something, rest of the country is at eight. For cost of living just within the last year.
Yeah.
So we are, and last year was not getting any cheaper and steel was not getting cheaper. We are going to be paying, no matter what we do. If we were to spend the same amount of money, we'd be paying much less project. If we spent double the money, we might get. Need some other project. I don't know how to project that, but I do know that time is of the essence and financial responsibility is of the essence. So that is my feeling. Uh, would you guys like to figure out that at all before I call for a public?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think again, when we're talking about some of the themes, cost tends to be one of the. Definitely the prevalent themes anytime you're talking to anybody. Well, we always can't find consensus on why people felt that it didn't work out. Cost always comes up again. Um, I feel like our residents have very real concerns around cost. And I feel like our goal right now should be continuing to listen and learn from the residents, but also working towards setting up the town and the future SBC for. For success.
Yes.
And as you said, I think it's the fiscally responsible thing to do is to make sure we're giving them. Options that allow them to offset that cost. I just feel like at this juncture in time, we need to be making sure we're keeping. As many paths and roads open for everybody to help us get a school. So.
You know. A million times.
Yes.
I think we'd be foolish.
Yeah.
To pass up. This opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, with that, do I have public input? Oh, all right. Uh, approach podium and give us your name and your address and then you have your three minutes.
Okay. It's Catherine Clark, one fifteen South Street. Um, thank you for all your, um. Thoughts that you were sharing. I totally agree with very much all what you were saying in the sense that I think we have a moment to come together. I did not sit in. Uh, I was virtual for your, um, meeting and with the joint session and I really appreciated. It seemed like we had a great spirit about people to come together and that's something I'm definitely for as well. Um, but for my quick three minutes, I'll try to talk super, super fast. I'm gonna, I know you can't answer questions, but I'm throwing some out. Knowing you can't answer. Um, so I guess I think I liked what you said just about measured speed. And so I know time is of the essence and I. And I'm coming here saying, very novice, not trying to sound like. I know, right? I'm just kind of coming at it more from like a towns person, like layperson perspective. Um, but I think that for me, sort of, you were talking about the data points, like a buy-in. This right now, for me, and I'm only speaking for myself, would be a buy-in moment in terms of, I'm not anti. For or against MSBA. True, but I think to have the data, like a little bit of like a, is there a pro, would it make sense for, it makes sense for me. To have sort of like a pro and con list, just like a flushed out, things that we might not be able to answer, you know, we don't, we're not omnipotent. On this, but things that we can maybe flush out before we, I know we're in a crunch, so I totally appreciate that. But is there's things that we can maybe flush out? So like the things that are going on and like townspeople's mind and for me, um. Like looking at that data would be an important piece, not for me to to make, I'm not voting on, but just so we have it as record. Um, so like things like. We don't know what MSB will, MSBA will do, and I do appreciate you bringing up the tin, Tisbury, that, um, Dr. Marston, because. They didn't, I, and I don't know this, but it, maybe they didn't go back into MSBA. They kind of just said, you know what, forget it, we're going to do it on our own. So we're kind of doing something a little bit unique, which is, could be really great, but my concern is. Or not a concern, but we don't know that process, right? Like what if we get back into MSBA and then they say. Another two to four years and we could have, I don't, I don't know any, I'm just, I'm not trying to say I know the exact timeframe, but I'm just saying there's a little bit more gray. Than like forty seconds. Okay, oh, shoot. Okay, all right. Um, I think we're like, one of the things that I would love to see is SBC maybe taking a stab at this after. Because I'm wondering, and I don't know the S, or what, after they're formed, to go in on it, just so we can just say pause, like. Not, I know, I know mean less time, but I don't know. I think that there could be some. Like ramifications, are there ramifications? We go into the SOI now and then we say no thanks. Okay, thank you for your time. I'm sorry. As clear as I go.
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um. Okay. So, uh. Does the rest of the committee feel, is there they could bring this up for vote at this point and feel as they were making an informed decision?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, again, I will read this very long motion and I appreciate you tolerating that. So. Do I hear a motion to approve the following resolution? Right. Result, having convened in an open meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty two, prior to the SOA submission closing date.
So.
SOI, thank you. Submission closing date. The School Committee of Medfield, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form. Dated April twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, for the Dale Street School located at forty five Adam Street, Medfield, Massachusetts. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories. For which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation or moderniz- modernization of school facility systems. Such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further spec- specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Medfield to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Do I hear a motion to approve? So move to anime. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Michelle Kirkby. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so three ayes and the motion passes unanimously. So thank you very much. Is there any other discussion we want to have on this discussion item right now? No?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, it's up to the selectmen. We will submit that to them. They have, uh, language that is essentially exactly the same except it says selection.
So they both know, or the majority that it's, it's dead.
Yeah. And we really won't know this until December. So hopefully the SBC at that point will be able to run it and be able to make more informed decisions about whether they would choose to accept it. If we were even able.
Right.
To take, uh, to be invited to. The program, so. Okay, the next is the former Medfield State Hospital update and a discussion around kind of what's going on there. Um, Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about our, our meeting?
Sure, so, um, Jess and I were able to meet with two members of the redevelopment committee and, um, town officials. This weekend and just kind of go over, you know, what, what the plans are for the special town meeting they're going to have and then. You know, try to get our input of how the impact is going to, what the impact's going to be in the school department and schools. So I think it was our first meeting together to go over that. Uh, I know that Jess had a couple of emails back and forth before that, but, um, we probably need to spend a little bit more time with them on really getting some real, uh. Clear data on what the impact's going to be for the school. So on our end, what we're going to do is work with Nezdek to see. If Nezdek can do, um, a projection on what worst case scenario, thirty four. Three-bedroom apartments, what that does in terms of our enrollment versus the eleven that's there now because there's some discrepancy in whether the state is going to make them do thirty four. Instead of the eleven because they're receiving, um, funding from the state, historical funding or something.
And then, uh, also whether, uh, fulfills our full BP obligations.
So we need to get that information to really give a really, to get, understand what the impact's going to be. I think what that initial, um, analysis was that they gave us. Uh, which is from July of twenty twenty one. Um, you know, talks about a financial impact around three or four hundred thousand dollars, but which.
Which we thought was a little hinky.
It, it could be a little higher. I mean, based on, you know, the number of students. So, I mean, I think we're looking at teachers, a bus, all kinds of different things that. Um, would impact that. So once we get the real numbers and we get to see what worst case scenario will look like. Um, we'll be able to work with them again to kind of read, to run this again and see what the impact's going to be. Um, I think the timeline was an important discussion too, looking at, uh, twenty twenty five as potentially opening and. The one critical piece that we need to know is it going to be rolling admissions in terms of folks going in there, right? Because when Park opened up. Um, when one section was done, people moved in, we got kids and it was just ongoing. So.
Incorporate them instead of having.
Right, so we just need to know if it's going to be all the kids coming in in twenty twenty five, or we're going to have students that come in on a rolling basis, which. It's funny the way we just want to know. So I think that was an important data point that we know, but I think we're gonna get together again soon and.
Yeah, as soon as we get the, uh, kind of a Nezdek. And I know that, uh. That the town officials, Nick and, and the development committee are going to meet with Trinity again. So Trinity is, a, a lot of people are kind of starting to ask me about this. Um, which is funny, but, uh. To kind of put it in a nutshell, uh, Trinity is proposing, uh, to reuse all of the buildings, the historic buildings. And so like the cafeteria, the guy, there's another laundry building, is that?
The bakery food service building.
Yeah.
We demolished.
Um, so.
Machine shop.
Right. Um, so they would use the historic buildings, the town is planning on keeping the arboretum and the cottages. Or are there future developments or something, you know, they haven't decided yet, but they're keeping that plot. Um, so Trinity is proposing three hundred and thirty four units of housing and rental housing. Twenty five percent of which would be, um, affordable. Seventy five percent would be market rate, um, and anybody who's been following kind of, uh, Medfield's struggles over time. To maintain affordable housing to the extent that needs to, uh, without having that friendly developers come in, um. That all thirty, three hundred and thirty four of those units would count. Towards our kind of allotment, you know, ten percent of affordable housing within the town. So it would put the town in a really pretty good position kind of going forward. Um. For the foreseeable future around being able to manage that part of kind of development. At the same time, I'm not sure how much more development. Form there is around here, but, um, you know. There's a lot of, um. There are people who, who are saying, you know, it's, well, they would have given us two million dollars for the land. But they would also be putting the infrastructure into that land, which is a significant expense. Um, and that is probably should be figured to some extent within the purchase price. I think that what our concern really is, is that, uh, if you have. The more three bedrooms you have, the more kids you have, and that's okay. We like kids. And even two bedrooms, right? And that's, but can we get, can we make this happen in a way that we don't. All of a sudden massively overload our, our younger elementary? Because, I mean, obviously, as the conversation that we just had. When the MSBA gave us those initial numbers and the Nezdek gave us these initial numbers, where we had to base our populations on for the last. Um. Project. Because the Medfield Town Hospital was not yet permitted for any of those, and still isn't, we're asking Nezdek to give us kind of grounds numbers.
Right.
Um, but this is the first time that we can figure in what impact the hospital will have on our schools. So we may. In the end, be looking at a full school because they say, oh my God, there's, yeah, like, we don't know right now. And so it does land a certain unfortunate error again, but. It's just something that we have to take into account, that we could actually be looking at either the same. Population numbers that we thought were too high. Or larger. And, um. And are those people who come to Medfield and move into the market rate housing because they're waiting to be able to buy?
Yeah.
Families who wait to be able to buy.
Yeah.
Have younger kids.
Right.
Right, so all of a sudden we have that. Elementary bubble again, which makes it that much more urgent, that we really look at our options as quickly as we can.
Sorry, you said it's thirty four three bedrooms?
That's worst case scenario.
Okay.
So they may be forced into that for the state.
Okay.
Um, they write now it's eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's eleven now.
And there's something about, it's, uh, given that the hospital itself is. Those buildings were never meant to be multifamily.
Right.
Or apartment, you know, the buildings themselves were built to be single rooms with common areas. And being a hundred questions old, they are also not the most easy things to kind of bring and figure, so. Um. So, you know, like two bedroom, three bedrooms are, that's about as much as you're going to get.
Yeah.
Out of it, nobody's looking at like, oh, we could make condos and townhouses and it's, you know, it's going to be kind of. Obviously Trinity does this and does this well and does it all the time. That's why they come in and they feel like they can make a profit off of this.
Yeah.
But, um, but they're going to be. You know, apartments for people who want to move into a great school district.
Yeah.
Which they will. It's just, we hope we can keep it that way.
So the good, fun, the good thing for us is that Nezdek has done this for lots of communities because this is happening everywhere with this development going on. Going in just all around us. You look, you drive on one oh nine Midways, kind of development there, Walpole's had a bunch a lot of years. So they'll be able to give us a pretty good assessment of where, how many kids they think, and, and they're, they're really good. I mean, their numbers have been dead on for. Long as I've been here.
And the other thing is, is, you know, like. We can absorb some number of kids across, it is, I think our real concern is whether we get hit. With a couple of classes that are suddenly completely swamped.
Yeah, you just don't know. If, if thirty, forty, fifty kids come in kindergarten, then that's a problem, right?
Yeah.
But if it's spread out among twelve grades or thirteen grades, then that's less of a problem. Except to, and you can't predict that, but at least they'll give us a pretty good assessment.
So we just, uh, we just keep an eye on it, but, uh, there will be a special town meeting in June and at that point. Um. That will be the town allowing for the selectmen to enter into negotiations for the sale. Is that correct? It's not that we're actually handing the keys that day, it's that it's.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be, uh, it's kind of like signing a purchase and sale a little bit, and that if you pull out of that purchase and sale, you're. And, you know, you're making a significant decision.
Yeah.
Um, but no, no doors closed exactly, I think.
Date on that special time meeting?
Which would also be the last day of school, the half day after the three-day weekend.
Yeah.
Which is also, uh, I think I can chalk up as the single least. Popular day to have the last day of school and may prove to be the least popular day to have a special town meeting. I, I, yeah.
Yeah, it's not definite yet, but that's.
So, you know. As they say at Easter, stay awake. Um. Okay, uh, I do not, I'm not going to call for public comment because there is no public. Here and the definition of insanity is just talking to yourself to an end, well, one of the few. Okay. Um, so at this point, uh, we are on our wrap-up session. We don't have any other agenda items today, unless I forgot one.
Right, no, there's no donations.
Thanks, there are no donations, so we will not be, uh, doing that. So the next thing is informational items.
So in your materials, you have the, any reports for both Except and Tech, which they give to us right around this time each year. Uh, from the previous year, so go through that. If you have any questions, let me know, but as you know, I serve on the board of both of those. They're very, they're very supportive of our district. Um, they save us money, they're great, special ed, they're.
Continuing Ed Tech does a huge amount of continuing Ed. And Spotify.
And Owen works with tech on student data privacy, which is.
Which is huge.
Great and saved us a lot of money with that, with that as well, so.
They're, you know, just organizations that are set up to, to be able to, to allow schools to be able to do the things that they need to do and have the buying power.
Also, in your informational items, just some public records and open meeting law requests that we've gotten. Um, since our last meeting, Michael, Michael now is, is new job. How many hours do you think you spent this, this week or so?
I think this week was about ten hours.
About ten hours this week doing that. So that information is, is in your packet and.
Quarter of your time if you're working for you. Yeah. A quarter of your time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I mean. Even if Michael is the one who receives it and has to gather it, it's also all of us who also then have to provide it, look for emails or things, you know. And there's a lot of, you know. Blanket and clothes and stuff. It's all, it's all public record. There's nothing to be hidden around it. Some of it's fairly mundane, some of it's really informative. Yeah, so, um. Okay. Is that all you have? Does anybody else have informational items? Anything aside from welcoming Michelle?
Welcome, Michelle.
Welcome, Michelle. Is.
Very happy to be here.
Yes, I'm particularly psyched for seniors. You know, we have a fashion show, um, on the second, so. That season is beginning and it's very exciting for seniors and their families. And especially these post-COVID years, we haven't had a fashion show since twenty nineteen, so.
And I love they wore their own fashions.
Yeah, no.
I mean, that's almost the best part of the whole thing, like not even going to another place and like, you know, trying to, it's like. The authenticity and the fun of finding, you know, like something you feel, you know, it's, yeah, I just love that part.
Um. The other thing I forgot to mention was in your, uh. Informational materials. Um, I was asked over the weekend to share this with you folks. Um, it was a email that was written by Christopher Cuppots. That she sent to the legislative leaders for Medfield. Um, so she sent this to. Senator Feeney, Representative Dooley, Representative Garlick, um. Senator Feeney, Representative Dooley, Representative Garlic, um, it's key questions and. All kinds of stuff. So I, and some attachments as well. So she had asked both Christine Creewell and I to pass along to our board, so. It's in your informational items as well.
All right, um, so although this is a fairly brief meeting, in fact, I think the shortest in two and a half years. And I'm working it, man, I'm working it. Um. We do have quite a, a big meeting on the nineteenth, and actually, if I remember correctly, we have uh Dr. Marsman. And Anna Mae and I have negotiations right up till seventh. So we'll be putting away the pizza, to put away our dinner and then running over here, um, which may mean that we need to have. Uh, scheduled executive session before, you know, like on a separate time. I wouldn't do it after.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we're gonna make ourselves nuts. I mean, there's only so much we can, we can do.
Right, you're right.
Think at that point. I, I, I can't do four to whenever.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah. Well, obviously, we know by nine o'clock. Uh, not exactly thinking great anymore. Okay, so however, on May nineteenth, um, the MASC is going to come on in and do an open meeting. Uh, School Committee Roles and Responsibilities Workshop. We have a new old representative. Um, from MASC, it's Jim. Yeah. Remember Jim?
Harding.
Harding.
Oh.
Sorry, I just came to the cross-up here for my daughter's game, sorry.
Oh, no, no, and you can do that, that's fine.
Half time, she's doing well, they're winning.
Um. And, uh. So we'll be doing that, which is part of kind of, I thought that it would be good to bring the MASC in because I think that so often, nobody knows kind of. What the school committee. Does. And it's a good time to reiterate that since, you know, this is a year in which uh there were two openings. And I also think that it's good for the community to be able to see on tape that they need to refer back to what it is that our actual roles are. Because I think we're, we're pretty active, or more active, I think, than a lot of other communities. And so we end up also then becoming kind of a catch-all for things, which we try to respond to. But let's kind of level set about what the goals and responsibilities are and then kind of get feedback. From ourselves and kind of where, where we want to go, because I think this sets us up pretty well for workshops around school setting over the summer and policy work.
Yeah.
As well. So, and then we just have kind of a, everybody knows. What we're all supposed to do. Also, on May nineteenth, we will have the annual school choice public hearing. Uh, and the student advisory follow-up on the evaluation of attitudes and access to mental wellness services in the high school. So they came in and did a full presentation in the fall. Uh, I will be meeting with them again and with uh Mrs. Hagan. And we'll kind of go back, look, see what was open, you know, kind of what open questions we had. And then, you know, they'll be able to give us their input and kind of give us that gift of being able to figure out. You know, from that student level, where it is that we need to target our resources a little better. Um, we will also, if necessary, either revoke or dissolve uh school committee subcommittees since uh we have had membership change. And there are some things that, you know, we're not doing right now, and I have some thoughts about. That. Um, and then potentially the health advisory update, though it's feeling more and more like a June meeting. All the time. Um, and it may be uh that also the.
They won't do it on that day. I mean, they, they had a meeting, they have a meeting scheduled, they have them this week or they have written to come back, so.
Okay.
It'll work fine.
And um, I think we might invite uh the hospital development. Committee, redevelopment committee in uh on that first meeting in June, so that they can have a conversation with us before.
Great, I have special time meeting.
Right.
Um, and I have been pushing off Megan Sullivan, although not intentionally, it's just like, it's busy. Uh, so I'd like to see her in June about sustainable that that she's wanting to present. So, um, and then we'll continue policy manual updates, um, particularly during the summer. I was thinking we could use some of our workshop time to really. Transfers in those. And break up our time.
How many meetings we have in June?
Uh, we always have one, we officially have, we always plan to perhaps have one.
Yeah.
At the end.
Maybe I'm.
No, the last one sometimes is canceled if we don't have, it's been so long since we did anything to do.
So when are we gonna have like MCP, E, PTOs, MMA, that kind of thing?
We have the second sixteen scheduled.
Okay.
Then sure, I can maybe split them off.
Is someone the second, someone sixteen, maybe, or, or, we'll see what the, the second brings. I mean, we might have enough time for.
Yeah, I personally love like the, to, to see all that they do.
It's great.
You know, that, that, so to piece them out to me seems, just doesn't give the, the ro, you know, the, the robust contributions they give to our school system. So that's why.
All very appreciative. Yeah, so we'll try to figure out whether that ends up being the second or the sixteen.
Sure. As long as we don't, as long as we don't, you know, cancel the sixteen, then they don't come, you know, then we don't have that.
I wouldn't make that, I wouldn't let that happen.
All right, very good, thank you.
Um, no, socializing more, so this is what I. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Okay. So, um, our next meeting is currently scheduled for Monday, May third, twenty twenty-two. May second. You know something, I actually corrected that, thinking that I was wrong.
Yeah.
Anyway, our uh currently scheduled for Monday, May second, immediately before annual town meeting. Um, and we'll uh post that. I think that we will find that necessary to hold. And uh, May nineteenth will be our next regular meeting. And with that. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh one P M.
Hallelujah.
Have a great vacation everyone.
I cannot imagine. Thank you, and thank you for anybody who hung in there.